Hey there, my name is Ashley Henson and I'm the Sheriff of Paulding County. And we're here at Paulding County High School where our deputies have been conducting Alert Training. Alert stands for Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training. And so what they're doing is they're here working with other agencies to perform active school shooter training. And so while you guys were away on break, our deputies have been here all week, training in the school environment where they can learn not only the new tactics they need to deploy in the event of a violent critical incident, but they're actually here onsite at a school where they know the layout and they know all the intricacies of each building. While our deputies are here at Paulding County High School, they're going to learn many aspects of Alert Training, some of which are learning how to set up an incident command, learning how to collaborate and work with other agencies. They're going to learn proper building clearing techniques, as well as many other techniques specifically designed to combat an active shooter event.
This is active alert training. It's an integrated response. So what we do is we combine all of public safety so that we're all getting the same training because in theory, what's going to happen with any critical incident is all of us are going to be responding at the same time. So today, we have represented the Paulding County Sheriff's Office, Paulding County School Police, we have the Paulding County Marshals, we have the Dallas Police Department, we have the Paulding County Fire Department, Paulding County EMS, and Paulding County EMA. So it's anybody who would answer that call and respond to this type of a scene, they're here today and we're doing cross-training so that we all know how to work better so that we can streamline this process. Because what it does is it speeds up our reaction time. When we stop that threat, we can now get these resources in to save lives. Bringing the fire department in is probably the biggest success to this because deputies are now getting a lot of tactical training for wound care, but it's never going to be as good as those EMTs, those paramedics, and those firefighters. So communicating and training and working collaboratively together with those units, that's what makes this a success. They mimic real-life scenarios that we've seen, whether it be the Pulse Night Club shootings, the Las Vegas shootings, Uvalde. We take into account these real incidents that have been dissected and we train on them to see how we can do things better.
We want to make sure our citizens know that not only does the Paulding County Sheriff's Office, but the Paulding County School District, as well as the cities of Dallas and Hiram, we are all committed to working together to ensure the safety of your children while they are in Paulding County schools. Please rest assured that this alert training will be conveyed to all of our deputies at some point throughout the coming year. So I hope you have the confidence that we have in our men and women that work here in the county in law enforcement to keep your kids safe.
Welcome to Mulberry Rock Park located on the south side of Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers scenic walking trails, a great playground for children to enjoy, multipurpose fields, and plenty of outdoor recreational activities. With amenities like our enclosed pavilion, multipurpose fields, and three miles of scenic pedestrian trails, Mulberry Rock Park provides the perfect backdrop for your outdoor adventures. Explore our community garden, let the kids unleash their imagination at the playground, or gather with friends and family at one of our five group pavilions for a memorable day in nature. Embrace the tranquility of Mulberry Rock Park as you stroll along the pedestrian trails, or enjoy a picnic at one of our single-table shelters. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Mulberry Rock Park, where every moment is an opportunity to connect with nature and create cherished memories.
Welcome to Veterans Memorial Park located on the Watson Government Complex here in Paulding County, Georgia. Our serene amphitheater and peaceful walking trail provide a tranquil space for reflection and gratitude. Within the park, you will find monuments paying tribute to the heroes of Paulding County who sacrificed their lives in service, as well as those who perished in the 9/11 attacks. Children can enjoy laughter and play on our well-equipped playground, while visitors can stroll along the scenic half-mile trail, surrounded by the beauty of nature. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Veterans Park, a place of honor, remembrance, and gratitude for our nation's heroes.
We're at beautiful Roundtree Recreation Center in Hiram, Georgia. We're here to raise money for the Special Olympics of Georgia. We're currently about to conduct the polar bear plunge. It's about 40 degrees, just a little less. Detective Don Apperson put this together. He's done a great job. We've raised almost $2,000 to donate to the Special Olympics of Georgia, Paulding County. So Special Olympics of Paulding is a very great organization where our children with different special needs get to go out and compete. I've got probably one of my favorite people in Paulding County that I want to introduce you to. Come here, McLean. Come over here, buddy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Come right here. So this is McLean Ashworth. Tell him, "Hey, McLean."
How are you?
All right. So, you know, McLean is the Paulding County Special Olympics Athletic Chairperson for Paulding County. So we're super excited to have him here and all his leadership, but we're here to help out Special Olympics of Paulding County and athletes like McLean. So we just want to thank everybody for their donation, for their time, and for Roundtree Recreation for making this possible. So thank you guys to everyone and we appreciate it. Look for this event next year, next February.
If you overhear a threat against our school, or any students or staff, reporting it right away is crucial. It's your responsibility. It doesn't matter how it was intended. School threats are no joke. Don't pass it along and don't spread rumors. Report it to a teacher, an administrator, or a school safety officer. Report it. Don't share it.
They better not come to school or someone's going to get hurt.
If you see or hear something, then say something to an adult. Your action can make a huge difference to help keep our schools safe. Threats against public schools are a serious crime. It's no joke.
There you go. Good morning. Y'all can say "good morning" back. Okay, good. Hey, it's good to have everybody. It's good to see a crowd. I want to thank our elected officials for being here. I see Jim Henson over there for the city of Dallas. Raise your hand. Where you at? You know, when you're sitting down, you got to raise your hand, buddy. You're too short. And we got his, we got his, there you go. I appreciate that. I knew you was there somewhere. And we got his son, Ashley. Where are you at, Ashley? Good to have you. God bless you. You should have brought your whole crew in here, buddy. Oh, it's great. Remind you guys, if you got a phone, and ladies, make sure you put it on silent, vibrate, so it won't be interrupted. I appreciate your cooperation in that. Marshal Mr. Tommy, if you'll bring up our list, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, buddy. And call this meeting to order and we're going to have somebody come up and pray. And then after that, if you'll do our pledge allegiance. So if y'all will stand for me and I'll tell you a little bit about Pastor Clay. What I've done is I love to research people and find out a little bit more about them than what's just on the list. Because everybody's got something special in their life. He is a full-time yard person. He does landscaping, so if anybody needs that, I think we're fixing to hire you, buddy. We got highly recommendation from you. Do what?
He's one of the best.
That's who recommended him. He does yours, don't he? He previously served as pastor working with North Cobb High School. Was that through FCA?
Yes, we, I was actually on staff at Summit Baptist Church as student pastor and I was chaplain for the lacrosse team out of North Cobb High School.
Still involved in that in any way?
No, once I left student ministry, the landscape business has a lot of demand on it. So it's been kind of hard to do that with what I do with my local church as well now.
He's married and his wife both, I think she works from home.
Yes, sir.
And y'all homeschool.
Yes, sir.
We homeschool all our kids and most of our grandkids are being homeschooled. So that's a, that's a job. Appreciate what you do. For fun, he loves coaching his girl softball team, watching Georgia football.
Yes, sir.
You're my man already. Hang out with family and all of his friends. So if you'll lead us in prayer, we would appreciate it and we'll give God the glory.
All right, let's pray. Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, thank you for each person that is in this room. God, as we gather today, first and foremost, we just ask that we would glorify you in every decision that we do, God. Thank you for the leaders that are here, Lord, that have been appointed, God, and the responsibility that is on them, Lord. We just ask that they would seek you, have a heart for you, because when we honor you, Lord, God, we see you do great things. Lord, I looked around today. I saw a ton of law enforcement here, God, and just ask you, Lord, for protection for them. Lord, thank you for them and their sacrifice, and all those who serve our community. And God, we just, we just ask, Lord, that in everything we do, we glorify you, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Just a reminder, the minutes are local for your review. In February, they have a work session, a work session also. That same day, board meeting, so that's a little for your review. Announcements. I'm going to share this. We had an opportunity to open up to do the ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts. Anybody here play pickleball? Up in here. There's a green light on this thing and it's green all the time. One's just brighter than the other. But we had, we had a great time in the ribbon cutting at the pickleball courts. And I want to apologize, they gave me these big scissors to cut the ribbon and I had nothing to do with that. That was prior. Keith Dunn should have been cutting that ribbon. And you might want to say something. He is the cause. We've got that out there right now. So it was a wonderful thing and I think we're going to, we're going to see a little bit of that right now. Is that right?
We are here for the ribbon cutting ceremony for the first dedicated pickleball courts in Paulding County. Mount Taber had the availability and the location available to put the pickleball court, so we decided to go ahead with it. And of course, Mr. DeNeen and the pickleball crew made it loud and clear they wanted to meet at Mount Taber Park. So, well, I believe this actually predates me as a commissioner. I've been a commissioner for four years and Michael can probably speak better, but it's been going on from the four years that I've been on the Board of Commissioners, we've talked about it.
You know, it's a very passionate group. We have done some things to help them out. Stripping tennis courts for pickleball, that sort of thing. The optimal goal, obviously, is to get dedicated courts for them. They're a very passionate group. They kept on us. We were able to make it happen finally with the support of the Commissioners and Chairman. As Parks employees, when we have our Commissioners supporting us, wanting us to continue to develop, excuse me, to develop facilities, that's, that's, that's a good problem to have. Mount Taber Park is located off of East Paulding Drive. Park hours are from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night. Those courts would be available any of those hours with the exception when we're doing some internal programming there. Because if you just want to come out and play, then no, sir, the courts are not reservable. Tournament play, things of that nature, lessons, those things are the types of reservations that we would take. It's important to point out that this is a splopped funded project. All our development for parks and facilities is done through the collection of that local auction and sale tax. So buy local. That is how we get these things done.
One, two, three. And I think I heard the next ribbon cutting we're going to have is going to be in your post, right, Sandy?
For pickleball?
Yes.
They better be. Where is Michael?
Oh, that's great. Things are happening in Paulding County. Glad y'all are a part of it. Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Deputy Bobby Kitchens. And I'm going to get Ashley up here to...
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Meredith, and Mr. Phillips. It's my honor to be talking with you this morning and to present the first Commissioners' Public Safety Award for 2025. So if we could, Deputy Bobby Kitchens, if you could come up front for me. This, this award, when you think about it, when, once you hear what, what occurred, there's a couple of words that come to my mind. It's de-escalation and crucial conversations. You can just head right up front so everybody can see you. So de-escalation and crucial, crucial conversations. We know that communication is the key to everything. And this gentleman right here, because of his, his demeanor, his calmness, the things that he said probably prevented someone from dying, to be honest with you. So I'm going to go into what took place. And then I'm going to read some of the words from the supervisor that recommended Bobby for this award, or recommended him for the recognition. So Sergeant Hank Crowe, I know he's here somewhere. There he is. So Hank recommended Deputy Kitchens for this award. And I'm going to read a couple of things about what took place. So on December 17th, 2024, our deputies responded to a domestic-type situation where an individual had been shot. Without going into the intimate details of the case, unfortunately, an individual was murdered as a result of this violent situation. Deputies responded to the scene, figured out who our suspect was, and immediately Bobby was on the phone trying to get, he got this individual's number, and he actually made contact with our murder suspect. Now, this is a very, obviously, someone who's just committed a very violent crime. And Bobby was able to get on the phone with him, be calm, communicate with him in an effective manner, and he was actually able to get this individual to surrender without anybody else getting hurt. And he was subsequently arrested without any further incident, and he's in jail for murder now. So I want to read a couple of words from you, or to you rather, from Sergeant Crowe. So it says Deputy Kitchens' actions exemplify the high standards of law enforcement. His ability to defuse a tense situation with professionalism and tact is a a testament to his training, experience, and natural aptitude for community policing. By prioritizing the safety and well-being of all involved, Deputy Kitchens has set a powerful example of how law enforcement officers can handle complex and emotionally charged situations with integrity and respect. And I just, I'm so proud personally of Bobby for what he did in this situation, because he literally could have prevented us from having to utilize deadly force, or from this suspect harming someone else, another innocent person. So I am so thankful and honored that Bobby is one of our deputies, and I'm so honored that he's receiving the Commissioners' Public Safety Award today. Thank you, Bobby. Congratulations.
And one, two, three. Thank you, buddy. The Paulding County Board of Commissioners also would like to recognize Mr. Jimmy Cole from the, from the Department of Transportation for 36 years of service of Paulding County. And I'll get Ms. Parrish to come up and talk a little bit, but I wanna say a few things also about him. He likes to hunt. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Pretty good bit. What's the biggest deer you got?
Uh, nine pointer.
Nine pointer. Here's what I've heard about him, from everybody in the DOT Department. He's one of the most honest people they've ever met in their entire life. A man of integrity and a man of his word. If he says something, you can count on it, and you don't have to, no wavering. He's one of the hardest-working individuals they've had in that department. And he's installed a work ethic within his team that has carried on throughout that. I got a text that I would like to read also, from your department. Okay. Tell the county that Jimmy Cole, who has been recognized for years of service today, is the most loving person in the whole DOP department. The difference he makes in their lives is unmatched. You're gonna be hard to replace, and I've heard that from several people. Okay.
Yes, sir. So Jimmy Cole is a lifelong resident of Paulding County, and he started his career with Paulding County on February the 9th of 1989. Over the course of his 36 years here with us, he's managed all of the paving in the county, well over a thousand miles of roads that he has managed and made sure have been resurfaced and paved and been safe for our residents. In August of 2023, he was promoted to the Assistant Road Maintenance Superintendent, which he now serves, and then he'll continue until he retires this Friday. Jimmy has successfully worked with all the crews in our maintenance division and really instilled a sense of purpose and guidance and mentorship for our entire department. After he retires, I know Jimmy wants to spend time with his family, his wife, his children, and his grandbabies. He's been an essential part of our department. He's been a key. You, you watch Jimmy and what he's done with our department. That's, that's who you want to be. You wanna, you wanna be a person like him with his leadership and his guidance, his knowledge and his experience. He can run any equipment out there. He's coming on weekends to make sure equipment's been maintained and overseen. He, he just does everything to make sure that we are successful and the residents of the county have safe streets that are paved. We are truly grateful for Jimmy and what he's done for us and for our county, for his hard work, and especially his incredible dedication to the county. You don't see that a whole lot. There's not too many people that dedicate their careers. Thirty-six years is an awful long time. We wanna congratulate Jimmy on his well-deserved retirement and hope that the next chapter is filled with adventure, hunting, relaxation and joy, spending time with the grandbabies. I know it's, it's gonna be all those things. And we'd like to thank you for your 36 years of service to the citizens of Paulding County. We wanna ask God to bless you and your family, and let you know that you're gonna really be missed.
Can't you stay a couple more years, Jimmy?
Come on up here, Jimmy. And as he's coming up, a few little notes that I also wrote down. Him and his crew have successfully surfaced and maintained thousands of miles of our county roads. He has deserved the retirement. Thank you for everything that you've actually done, and your whole department says you're irreplaceable. So I'm gonna congratulate you. Here is a plaque.
Thank you, sir.
You betcha. God bless you. You betcha.
Thank you, y'all.
Two more years?
Two more years.
Oh, come on, Jimmy.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I know it.
Thank you.
You can take your plaque and leave the baby.
They're the least.
She probably has the best.
Give him another hand. Thank you, Jimmy. We have a good crew up here. Even our attorney said, "Mr. Chairman, I moved your chair, so when you sit down, I'll make sure you don't, you don't fall on the floor." So thank y'all so much for putting such a great staff around me. No invited guests. Bit awards. First one is award storm, Stormwater Maintenance Project located in 380 Spring Ridge Road to WE Construction, Inc., in the amount of $85,612.23. Funded of this project will be allocated from the Stormwater Department General Fund. Project is located in Post One.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. On November 11th of 2024, Paulding County executed the FY 2025 Stormwater Infrastructure Replacement and Repair Unit Price Contract, FY 2025 UPC is what we call it, with nine contractors selected. The Paulding County Stormwater Department identified the repair maintenance project located at 380 Spring Ridge Drive in the Poplar Springs Park subdivision. The project includes the removal of vituminous coated corrugated metal pipe and replacement with dual-wall, high-density polyethylene stormwater conveyance pipe between the homes addressed at 380 and 400 Spring Ridge Drive, installing manholes, drop inlets, catch basins, lardin sections, site restoration, and all the incidental work necessary to complete the improvements at this location. Based on the UPC contract, the following contractors were provided quotes for the project, which were WE Contracting, Inc., Ardeto Construction LLC, and Edison Underground. WE Contracting, Inc. was selected for the project based on their pricing in the FY 2025 UPC in the amount of $85,612.23. Paulding County would like to request that the Board of Commissioners consider awarding the Stormwater Maintenance Project located at 380 Storm, uh, Spring Ridge Drive to WE Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $85,612.23, which is located in Post One, and funding will be allocated from the Stormwater Department General Funds.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Henson, if you'll come up, I know that there's a lot of things going on in the Sheriff's Department, and I wanted to tell you, this past, a few days ago, I got to spend a little bit of time with Craig Cross and also Let Mitchell, and they were wonderful. I laughed my head off having lunch with them. So tell us what's going on in your department, buddy.
Well, first of all, we're not a department, we're an office. So that's, that's the big difference, is that's the Sheriff's Office, so we're a constitutional office. But I wanna say before we get started, Jimmy Cole has been a huge, huge friend of the Sheriff's Office. He is always, he was our go-to guy. We're gonna miss him tremendously, because if we ever needed something, he was our go-to guy. And so Jimmy is a testament to what hard work looks like, and we're gonna miss him at the Sheriff's Office as well. So we've got a slideshow waiting on Jeff and Philip to get her up, and I think they're getting it going right now. Perfect. So as you look around, we're here to celebrate what Bobby's done, but we're also here, I, I can't tell you how excited I am. This has been about twenty, what, twenty-two and a half years in the making, to me, be up here, to address you guys as the 50th Sheriff of Paulding County. So I couldn't be more excited to be here, and to tell you about what's going on at the Sheriff's Office. We have gotten so much done in just nearly two months, and that's what I wanna talk about. I wanna highlight the things that we've done. I wanna show you the things that we're going to do. As you can see by looking around this room with all the, the uniforms in the room, there's a lot of excitement at the Sheriff's Office. So we'll get right to it. We're gonna talk about what we've got going on so far. So as of right now, we've got 320 employees, and that's including both full-time and part-time. We've got 42 vacancies, and we've filled eight vacancies this year alone. So in 2025, we filled eight positions, which is awesome. We're getting folks in the door. People are excited. There's a lot of fire desire for people wanting to come work with us. Our jail is fully staffed, and right now, we've got 252 inmates with a 631 capacity for our jail, and we've got 270 registered sex offenders. So we've got a deputy that, and a whole team that monitors those sex offenders on a regular basis. So we did a, pretty much a complete organizational restructure, and you guys, a lot of you guys came to our promotion ceremony after the first of the year. And what we've done, one of our big goals was to have Division Commanders and Assistant Division Commanders, because there were several divisions that didn't have a number-two person. So we took what, what we had currently, we took some vacancies that we currently had, and we did a lot of moving around. And right now, we've got, every single division has a, has a Division Commander and an Assistant Division Commander. We had multiple deputies that had been waiting 12, 14 months to move from one division to another after they'd received a promotion or a lateral transfer approval. We've gotten every single person that had been waiting for 14 months. We've got them moved to where they wanna be. So y'all know what that does? That increases morale, right? Because nobody wants to sit somewhere and be somewhere they don't wanna be. So what we've done is we have, and I told y'all, y'all heard me what I said in the campaign, we're gonna change the culture. And folks, this is what it looks like, putting people where they wanna be, moving things around, creating a, a culture and an organization where people wanna be there. And so we're so excited about that. So if you, if you look up on the screen, you see Billy Hurst, he's our chief deputy. Billy's been with the Sheriff's Office 24 years, an Army veteran, a great American. He's a star quarterback at Paulding County High School from back in the day, and he's my number-two guy, and I love him to death, and he is, he's huge, and he can sling a football from here to hire him, still. So don't let him, don't let him fool you. Clint Langford, he's, and Billy's lived here his whole life, Clint's lived here his whole life. Clint's 31 years with the Sheriff's Office. He's our chief administrator, he's our number-three guy. He helps keep Billy and I in line. Clint had a little small college football career at Jack State back in the day, but just a great guy, two great Americans, great Paulding Countyans, and they are helping us move this Sheriff's Office forward. We're just so excited about the organizational changes we've had, and these two men for helping keep me in line. Some updated positions. If you look on the picture, you'll see our newest, our Chief Communications Officer, Jordan Yodas, he's here in the audience. Jordan, if you'll stand up. Jordan comes to us from Kentucky. He's a career firefighter. He and I have known each other for years. We've been colleagues, and we've been talking about this for over a year. I talked to him out of being a fireman, and I don't know if Chiefs, we got a couple of our chiefs in the room, don't try to steal him. But he's gonna be our Chief Communications Officer. He started yesterday, and he's already working on a press release this morning. He's hit the ground running, and everybody knows Ricky Waters beside him in the photograph. Ricky was a longtime K-9 handler. He and I started about the same time. He's our new Community Relations Director, and so that's part of being that community-driven aspect of what we've been talking about the entire time, you know, that I was running for sheriff. And so Ricky's gonna head that up, and you'll see some more photographs in a minute about how much Ricky's already done. Jordan's already hit the ground running, so we're super excited about that. We got a new K-9 officer, so with Ricky transitioning into that Community Relations role, we've already filled his role with Deputy Matthew Crook. He's already certified, and he and his K-9 partner are ready to go. We've already had four senior deputies who have been deputies for years, who were on the SWAT team for years, come back, and they're back on the SWAT team. That's four guys with more than 10 years of experience. I mean, you do the math, and that's just a lot of experience that comes right back to our SWAT team, so we're excited about that. I hope y'all feel the enthusiasm that I feel, because things are so great. Everybody's like, "How's it going? Is it, what, what, is it what you thought it was?" It's everything and more, and it's been so awesome. I just, I can't, can't tell you how excited I am. Here's what we've done. Things that I said we were gonna do, guess what? We've done it. We got a cold case unit. We've got a retired FBI agent that is one of the detectives in our cold case unit. It's overseen by Captain Mike Hill, so Mike's overseeing that. We got a retired FBI agent who is working in our cold case unit. He's a part-time detective, and he's already looking at old cold cases, and we've already got some resolutions to some things that we're excited about here. In the next few months, we'll be talking about more, but they have already hit the ground running, and they are getting it done. An intelligence unit. So if you look there, that's our new Intelligence Director, Jody Vaughn, and he is already bringing his expertise. He's got, I think, around 30 years of experience. He retired from Cherokee County, came to us. He's a Paulding County boy, and he is coming, and he is helping set up our intelligence unit. We're in the process of working on a real-time crime center. That's our goal. We're not quite there yet, but Jody is the, the key piece of getting this thing started. He's already working hard, so we're excited about having him. We've started a gang unit. There's a gang problem in Paulding County. There's a gang problem in our nation, but we've got a gang unit going. Last week, we executed multiple search warrants and arrested multiple individuals for entering auto thefts. And when people go, and, and these individuals go out and they're entering autos, they're stealing guns. That's what they're looking for. And they stole some really high-end guns, and through our gang unit and through our detectives and our drug task force, we were able to all work together, and we got those guns back. And we put those jokers in jail. That's what we're gonna do, y'all. We're trying to stop crime at the county line, and we're doing it every single day. So training, that's part, the innovative part of what we're doing. If you looked at our social media pages last week while everybody was on fall break, we had our deputies at Paulding County High School, they were conducting alert training, which is advanced law enforcement rapid response training, which is active shooter training. So in the event of an active shooter, all our deputies are gonna be going through this training, and they'll know exactly what to do, how to do it, and where to go, setting up incident command and all those things. We're super excited about that. Right now, we've got seven deputy cadets in the Georgia Public Safety Training Center mandate class up in Rome. They're doing excellent. Their mandate training, which is basically like the police academy, it's, it's actually doubled. It's now 20 weeks. So it was around 10, now it's 20, and so it's doubled in length, which should give us a better product. We're excited about our deputies going to Gipstick Rome. That's the acronym. That's what we call it. And we're excited about the product we're gonna get from that. If you watched the campaign, I talked about body cams. Well, and I will give Gary an immense amount of credit, because Gary had the, the forethought, and Gary applied for Sheriff Gary Gullidge, our retired sheriff, applied for a Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant, which we were awarded for $297,000. It's a match grant, and so what we're gonna do is we're getting body cameras. We're, next week should be starting the testing phase of trying to figure out which manufacturer we wanna go with, but that's part of what we're trying to do. We're trying to be transparent. We're trying to be innovative, and so body cams is gonna help us do that. We're in the HEAT grant process, so HEAT is through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, which is the Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic Grant. And it's a grant, and they provide us salaries and vehicles to go out and enforce traffic laws, DUIs, speeders, things like that. That's one of the things we heard in the campaign, was that we're sick and tired of seeing these speeders on our highways. Well, guess what? Be careful what you ask for, because it's coming. And we're gonna be pulling some folks over. We already have been, but it's coming more. We're working in this grant process, and we're hopeful by the end of the year we'll have the grant secured. We've already submitted our paperwork. And a huge thanks to Tabitha and her team. I know y'all know this, but I'm gonna reiterate it. Tabitha Pollard is a rock star for Paulding County Government. She's huge. I'm telling you right now, her staff, her staff helps keep us in line. She's been a huge help and a friend to me, but her and her staff have helped us with these grants, and so just huge kudos to her. Something else we're doing is replacing some outdated, outdated duty weapons. We've had the same weapon systems for, coming up on 20 years, so it's time to... We've had the same weapon systems for, coming up on 20 years, so it's time to, to get rid of those old pistols and get with some new, more current weapon systems. We've got the Glock Model 45 with the red dot sight, some light and laser combos on these weapon systems. So we're getting, we're getting into the 21st century, so we're super excited about that. We've just made a huge purchase of a little over 150 weapons. And bear in mind, y'all, we're not, we're not increasing our budget. We're doing this all within the parameters of the, the current budget that we have. So we're not coming asking y'all for any money, we might later, but not right now. We are being fiscally responsible with all these expenditures, so, which makes me excited, and I know it makes you guys excited. So those are some things we're doing with training. Since January 1st, I want y'all to look at these photographs, I want y'all to look at these numbers, folks. This is huge, and we couldn't do this without our, our partnership with the Northwest Georgia Drug Task Force, our partnership with the DA's office, our DA's here, DA Lane. Our partnership with these other entities are helping us do this right here. We're getting these drugs and these guns off the street. And this is not the case that I was telling you about with the gang stuff. This is a completely separate case. If you look at all those amounts, 38,000 in marijuana, 1,948 grams, $200 in pills seized, 16 firearms. We got 16 firearms off the street that could be used in crimes. And I think the big thing is, look at the fentanyl. That's a lot, 48.4 grams of fentanyl. That's, what, almost a couple ounces of fentanyl? That is enough to kill an army of folks. So thank goodness for our Northwest Georgia Drug Task Force, our deputies, our detectives who all partnered together, and DA Lane for when he gets ready to prosecute this, we're excited about that. But that's what we're doing, y'all. We're kicking ass and taking names, folks. I'm telling you right now, that's what we're doing. Administratively, you're going to start seeing a new look on our vehicles. The old, the old burgundy graphics were pretty cool in 94, we're getting to 2025, and if you look on the photograph, we're changing it up. We want to have a more current look. We've implemented a beard policy. I don't have one, but if you look in the back, we've got several of our guys that have beards. Instant morale boost. I mean, it's just, it's free, it doesn't cost anything to, to give these guys what they want. We've already started with some staff surveys. We're asking our people what they want, and they're telling us. They are telling us exactly what they want, from hats to pensions to uniforms to things like that. We're asking our people what they want. We're excited to be working with our commissioners on this public safety pension. Y'all have done a fantastic job. You know, we've been working with Chief Brubaker and his team, David Mumford and his team, Chief Hess and his team, and we want to sit down with you guys and talk about this public safety pension. We want to get the draw wage to 55. You can't do this job when you're an old man or an old woman. We've got to keep working on getting that draw wage down to the 55 draw wage, and I think we can do it. And I want to give a huge thanks to Tara, I almost said Rainwater, that's her maiden name. Tara and her staff at HR, they are some other rock stars. They are huge. Tara, Tara and Tabitha have been our go-tos during this transition, and they are huge. And I hope y'all know, as commissioners and leaders of this county, how important they are to the successful operation of our county. They are huge. And I'm not just saying that to pump them up, that is the God's honest truth. They are wonderful women, and I'm so thankful for them every day. And we're, we're continuing to work, obviously, with you guys on this pension. Something else we're doing, we're working on the Paulding Sheriff's Foundation. We've submitted the paperwork, we're sending it to the feds and the state to get it approved. And basically what it'll be is, we had monies in the past that, we had a flower fund, and we had a benevolence fund, but what we're doing is we're combining those monies, and we're creating the Paulding Sheriff's Foundation. And basically what that will do is, it will take care of our deputies in times of need. So we've got Paulding Public Safety Appreciation, we've got the Honoring Heroes Foundation, they can only do so much. They have other agencies they're responsible to help. This fund, when we already have money in place, will help take care of our people. If we want to feed our people a meal, if we want to recognize someone and do something for them, we can do that with our foundation. And so that's exciting, we're, we're getting that up and running, and that should be up and running here in hopefully 90 days or so. Paulding Cops for Kids, want to plug our golf tournaments coming up on April 23rd at 9:00 AM at Creekside Golf and Country Club. The QR code on the screen, if you click that, it'll take you to our registration link. We'd love to have you all out, it's a fun event, raises money for our Cops for Kids Christmas shopping event, something that we just implemented, and something I've been wanting to do for about 10 years, is create a scholarship fund in the, in the Cops for Kids name, and we've done that. We've taken money that we have raised over the years, taken the interest off money we've gotten a CD, and we've created a scholarship fund, and we're in the process of coming up with the parameters and what the, what the requirements will be. But we will offer two $1,000 scholarships to Paulding County students, Paulding County seniors, whether at homeschool or in public school, or private school, if they're in Paulding County, we're going to open it up to all those, those young people and give them an opportunity to get a scholarship from us. We want to give back to our community, because Cops for Kids is, is about our kids and helping our kids and bridging that gap between law enforcement and the community. So we're doing that here coming up soon. And something else that we got coming up, and this is where I really need y'all's help, I need the community's help. National Police Week is coming up, it's May 15, or it's May 11th through 17th, national, May 15th, rather, is National Peace Officers Memorial Day. As everybody knows, Brandon Cunningham was tragically murdered last year on August 17th, and this year, his name, yup, Sandy's got his bracelet on, I've got mine on, probably every single one of these men and women back here that are deputies have one on too. Gives me chills just to think about it. But the national memorial, that, his name will be inscribed on the wall, and it'll be there from now until forever. And so we're sending a contingent up of his family, our staff, and it's going to be expensive. So we're already reaching out to the community to help raise money. It's anywhere, depending on, we've got some people driving, we're, we're flying some people up, we're flying his family up, but we need money. We need between 30 and probably $40,000 to, to fund getting everybody up there with per diem and plane and fuel and rooms and all the things. So we're reaching out to the community for help, trying to get some money to send our staff and his family up there, because they deserve to enjoy this week and remember his honor. There's a whole list of things that'll be going on that week, but May 15th is the day on the National Mall where all the men and women who died in the line of duty in 2024 will be recognized. His children will go up, and they'll place a flower in his honor on the, on the wreath at the, on the National Mall. So please help spread the word about that, we're trying to raise money to send our men and women up there for that as well. And community outreach, this is where I was talking about with Lieutenant Ricky Waters. These are some things we've already done this year. We've delivered food to schools, we've gone and talked to Boy Scout groups, Ricky's with, I think that's, is that a badger, Ricky?
I think it's a sloth.
Sloth, okay, it's a sloth. Okay. Anyway, he's, he's out there, he's doing his thing, we're going to grow that unit, but obviously we got to, we got to start with baby steps. But it's all about that community-driven approach to being in our community. And so I think that's kind of sums everything up with what we got going on. We're excited about what the Paulding County Sheriff's Office has going on. I hope you feel the excitement that I feel, because this is genuine, this is not a made-for-TV moment. This is real deal stuff. I'm excited, our staff's excited, you can see by the outpouring of support. I don't know if you've noticed it or not, there's a lot of deputies in the room every meeting we have, and that's not by mistake, that's because I want them to be involved. I want them to know what you guys do, how government works, because it's important. We're here to support you guys, we're here to work with you guys, and whatever we can do to make y'all's job easier, please let me know, and likewise, we'll help you guys any way we can. Does anyone have any questions about anything we've got going on?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you collecting for the Washington DC trip? Are you doing fundraisers or?
We have not yet, so we just got the information the weekend before last. We had to go down to, to Forsyth, to the State Training Center and meet with COPS, which is the concerns of police survivors. They're gonna, they're gonna help finance some of it, the local FOP is helping finance some of it, a lot of our vendors have already helped, and they've donated money, but right now, we've, we've got to, we don't have a mechanism yet, but we're going to create a mechanism, we're, we're going to funnel our money through the Cops for Kids account, because it is a 501(c)(3). So any donations that we get, will go through COPS for Kids, and then we'll earmark those dollars for our Washington DC trip. And that way, we don't, you know, intermingle COPS for Kids money and, and money for the DC trip. So we'll have a way very soon for people to donate online. We don't have any fundraisers planned yet, but we're working on that as we speak, so just help us spread the word.
I would be willing to help you guys with that.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. It's going to be very, a very, very moving week, and unfortunately, we don't want to have to go, but we're honored that we'll get to remember Brandon. We've got some plans for him down the road, we're going to honor him with some, some memorialization of some facilities we have, but that'll be a little bit down the road, but we're, we're, we want to make sure we remember him and all he did for us.
I have a question. That HEAT unit, so I got to figure out when I'm going to have to alter my driving style.
So you're going to have to look out for the blue cars.
The blue cars.
Yeah, blue and black.
And that, has it started, or is it going to start?
No, ma'am, so we've applied for the grant. It goes through the, the processes through the state, and we're hopeful.
I'm asking for a friend, if you understand.
We're, we're hopeful that we'll be awarded the grant sometime later this fall, and then hopefully implementation later this year, early into '26. So we're excited. We had this grant years ago, and it, it went away, and so we're trying to re-implement this grant that we had years ago.
Okay, great. Sheriff, I noticed on Paulding County Crime, I have that app, and there are a lot of DUIs and a lot of people going to jail just from off the road, from being stopped. Is that something new?
Well, I won't say that it's new, but we have definitely had an increased presence, more enforcement. I told our folks, I said, "Look, we're not hiding behind churches and sitting there watching Netflix at night. We're going to be out and about, we're going to be patrolling, you're going to see these, you'll see blue lights on our patrol cars, and they're kind of dim, dimly lit. Those are called cruise lights, and the purpose of those are, so when they're riding through subdivisions, neighborhoods, you know that it's a, a law enforcement officer riding through, and they're not flashing and all that, so you know there's not an emergency, but you at least know that they're riding through." And so that's what they're doing. They're sitting out in medians, they're sitting in, in publicly viewable areas. Maybe they are writing a report, but what do you do when you see a police car, sheriff's car, in the middle of the median?
Slow down.
Everybody slows down, exactly. That's what I told our guys, you can be writing a report, and you're doing two things at one time, and you don't even know it. You're slowing folks down. That's right. So we've had some road checks going on, we've worked, we're working with our Western Regional Traffic Network, though we had a big road check in Hiram, and there were a lot of folks that got stopped. We've done some, some saturated patrols in specific areas. So we're really, our, our supervisors are really harnessing their deputies and getting them out there in, in an enforcement mood. Yes, ma'am.
Sheriff, I know when I first moved out here, you couldn't go down a road without checking license. Do we still do that? I hadn't seen it in a while.
Like a license check?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm talking about, a road check. A road check and a license check are the same thing, that's exactly right. And we had a huge one in Hiram probably three or four weeks ago, and that was through the Western Regional Traffic Network, which is part of GOHS, which is the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. So that's a partnership that we're with. And so what happens is, when we have these regional traffic meetings, we bring in deputies and officers from all over our region, and every month, you have a specific location you go to. It might be Dallas one week or one month, it might be Hiram, it might be Paulding, it might be Carroll, it might be Douglas, it might be Harrelson Polk, and all of those people go to those specific counties, and they help conduct a concentrated road check. And so that's exactly, used to on Old Hunt Back Bridge Road, Sheriff Bruce Harris and a couple of the troopers would be sitting there, I can remember as a kid. And they were always there on Old Hunt Back Bridge, which is now Old Harris. But yeah, they were always there, because you couldn't turn around. But yeah, so we're, they were. The old Paulding County folks remember that. Ellen, you remember, don't you? That's right. And it's right close to your house. That's right. So, well, thank you guys so much, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I know it was a little lengthy, but I felt like it was important for you guys to know all the things that we've got going on, and that we are super excited about working with you guys. And whatever we can do to help, please do let us know.
Good. Before you go.
Yes, sir.
Y'all don't know how privileged we are in Paulding County. I've been going to ACCG training quite a bit all day yesterday. 159 counties, and every one of them has the same issue, and they talk about not getting along with their sheriff's department, and how much chaos and trouble it causes the county. Y'all have no idea how lucky we are that we have a good communication, and it's going to get better.
Oh, yeah.
With our sheriff's department and, and, and everything. And the other one, I, I went to class yesterday on finance. I didn't do good in college in finance, I can tell you that right now, but they said, "What do you want to get out of this class?" I said, "I want all my departments to be as good as our finance director." They said, "What makes her so good?" I said, "She has a triple-A credit rating," and they said, "No way. Nobody has that." And I said, "Well, Paulding County does, so thank you, Tabitha. We've got great department heads, and they're in this room." And I say, "Thank you," because we don't have the same challenges that we other counties have, so thanks for your hard work. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank y'all so much.
Okay. We don't have any public participation on the agenda items. First agenda item that we'll talk about is action to approve the street for potential maintenance. Ms. Littman, is she here? Yes.
These are all the senior agenda items.
Yeah, did not say that.
She doesn't necessarily need to talk on them.
She don't need to. Well, you can keep your seat then. You don't need to come up. And this is Crestwood Station Phase 1, it's Creekview Road, Creekwater Drive, Bentwater Court, and Creekwater Court. Okay? The next on the agenda is number four, approve the reappointment of Jeff Knowles to the Industrial Building Authority with an ending item, with an ending term of December the 31st, 2027, and appoint Dan Knowles, Nolan, to fill the unexpired term of Tommy Mars on the Industrial Building Authority, which is our IBA, with the term ending December the 31st, 2025. Any of y'all want to, commissioners, any of y'all want to move any of this to new business? Y'all good with it? Okay. No old business, new business, to discuss action to adopt the intergovernment agreement, the IGA, with the city of Dallas to transfer, to the, transfer the holding hands parcel and adjoining parking lot between the W. Griffin Street and the West Spring Street to the city of Dallas. And I have asked Jason to explain a little bit more of that.
Commissioners, this is in regard to the old building, maintenance building. We have had that under lease with Helping Hands since probably late, well, 2011, 2012. Dallas is in, I want to turn, is that any better? Okay. Dallas downtown is going through a major redevelopment process, and they have approached the county with a desire to have the county transfer the Helping Hands parcel, as well as the parking lot across the street, to the city of Dallas, so that they can convent, commence their redevelopment project later this spring. So this intergovernmental agreement does several items. First off, it transfers the existing lease with Helping Hands, it assigns it over to First off, it transfers the existing lease with Helping Hands, assigns it over to the City of Dallas. Pursuant to this agreement, Paulding County is gonna transfer that property to the City of Dallas. Getting into additional detail, once the transfer is made and the lease is assigned, the City of Dallas, through its Downtown Development Authority, is going to provide a space for Helping Hands to relocate for a period of 24 months. They will have a nominal rent for that of a dollar a month. And hopefully, once that 24 months is over, Helping Hands has actually purchased a new home for their facilities, that they're gonna be in the process of redeveloping. And once that lease expires, hopefully, they will be moving to that new location. Pursuant to this IGA, Helping Hands will be paying its own utilities. They will not have to pay for relocation costs. I believe the City of Dallas may be covering that. I know the county is not obligated to cover that. The goal is to have Helping Hands out of that location no later than April 7th later this spring. And finally, as a part of what we call the consideration for this transfer to the City of Dallas, of the county's property, Dallas will agree to turn over and transfer to Paulding County its retail water customers that currently exist outside of what's called the Dallas Water Service Area. That's about 3,500 customers, give or take. It's a rounded number, but the goal is to have that in place, those transfers completed no later than July 1 of 2025 this year. I think that covers most of the components. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that y'all may have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? May I approach?
Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I know I'm not on the agenda, but thank you. I've just texted our city manager, Kendall Smith, and the agreement with the water is, he says, "It's no problem." So, we'll have that agreement, and everything will work out great. And thank you for what you're doing to help us in the city. We've got a wonderful project going on. I mean, it's gonna be tremendous. And you'll see a big difference as soon as we can pull some of this together, as soon as we move Helping Hands and get everything transferred over to the D, City of Dallas or Downtown Development Authority, we'll be, we'll be doing some demolition and getting things ready to move forward. And we're in talks with our developers, and there's a plan set out, and every month, we're meeting. And we're meeting these objectives every month as we, as we go along. We've already done the core samples, so everything is good there. We only have two more pieces of property to approach. One is the liquor store, and the other is the First Baptist Church Lot. So, we're in negotiation now with the liquor store, and that should be completed, hopefully, very soon. And so, there'll be a three-block area that's gonna be tremendous growth for the City of Dallas. And we appreciate everything that you do to help us. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Chairman.
You're mighty welcome. I will tell you this, I think we've been talking about that way before I came on board, and it's good to put this to bed, and it's been great working with the city. And I think we've come up to an agreement that is a win-win situation for the city and also for the county. So, thank you for your participation. Next, to discuss action to adopt the employee benefit renewal. There you go. I was gonna ask you if you would elaborate on that.
Good morning. It's that time of year for our benefits renewal piece, and this is a huge piece for our retention and recruitment efforts. In your packet, I put together, there's some good news here. Our rates for dental and vision coverage through Anthem are guaranteed, so there's no increase on that. Dental is guaranteed through 2026, your vision is through 2028. There is no increase on our ancillary coverage, which includes our life insurance, the disability. We're gonna maintain our coverage with Aflac. There was no change to those rates as well. We are enhancing the coverage. We're adding a piece with Ansel, that's Samara. It's another opportunity for employees to take on a accidental policy, group illness or hospital indemnity. We're offering that. There's no change in our FLEX spending account. The only change that we're gonna have this year or increase is to our medical piece. And this is the first year that we have done renewal under a self-funded plan. So, this was a little bit different. The increase was 38.4%. And the reason that is, is that we had several high-cost claims, and those claims were something that was just beyond our control. That is not something that we could help. But I hope in the future, with the programs that Anthem's gonna help us put forth, we've got the Health Fair coming, we've got several other programs that are coming, that we'll be able to combat some of those claims that we're, can bring down. And that's gonna be on part of our employees and department heads to get that information out and educate our employees on how to bring down those claims, at least control the claims that we can. But that's why we have such a high increase. And NFP did a good job negotiating this for us, and they did explain that even if we were fully self-funded, we would still be looking at this amount of increase. It's just the industry right now, and it also would be the types of claims that we have. Y'all got any questions?
We worked hard on the (inaudible).
Yes, I finally got it finished yesterday at 3 o'clock. So, I'm sorry that it was late, but it's been down to the wire to try to get all these pieces to come together, so.
He does a great job.
Thank you.
Everybody's gonna, employees are gonna love that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is, any questions? Y'all got any? That's the conclusion of River Business.
I think Miss Galway has a question.
Oh.
I just wanted to, I mean, I'm sure you did, but I guess we checked with all the other insurance companies, and this is the best we can do.
They did, tried to negotiate it down. It went anywhere from 38. We had some that come in at 49%, some that came in at 52%. I think the highest increase was like 12 million.